Okay. We will call our meeting to order. This is the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission meeting for August 19th, 2020. We do have a quorum present, so we will get started with our meeting today. First, we have our consent agenda. Several items, I didn't count them, but we'll get started with those. First item is East Vine Villas Final Platt for one lot and Horizontal Property Regime Platt for six units on 0.71 acres. Zoned PRD located along East Vine Street. BNA Homes LLC is the developer. Item B is Generals Landing Town Homes Section 2 Phase 2B. Final Platt for two lots and Horizontal Property Regime Platt for 77 units on 11.99 acres. Zoned PRD located along West Thompson Lane. Blue Sky Construction, Inc. is the developer. Item C is The Meadows at Kimber Woods. Section 6 Preliminary Platt for 18 lots on 3.63 acres. Zoned PRD located along St. Andrews Drive. KW53 LLC is the developer. Item D is Carlton Landing. Section 2 Preliminary Platt for 38 lots on 11.29 acres. Zoned RS10 located west of New Salem Highway. Cornerstone Development LLC is the developer. Item E, The Crossings of Three Rivers. Re-subdivision of lots 22 and 23. Final Platt for four lots on 0.37 acres. Zoned PRD located along Hospitality Lane. Three Rivers LLC is the developer. Item F, Valley Farms. Section 1 Final Platt for 36 lots on 10.87 acres. Zoned PUD, Rutherford County. And served as an outside-the-city sewer customer located along Dunbar Lane. Valley Farms Group LLC is the developer. Item G, Rivers Edge. Section 3 Phase 2. Final Platt for 66 lots on 20.15 acres. Zoned RS10 located along Blue Heron Drive and Murano Drive. Rivers Edge Investments LLC is the developer. Item H is Brookwood Point. Final Platt for one lot on 13.93 acres. Zoned PRD located along North Tennessee Boulevard. Old South Properties is the developer. Item I is Parkway Place. Section 2 Final Platt for five lots on 20.88 acres. Zoned PID located along Richard Reeves Drive. Swanson Development LP is the developer. And item J is Salem Square Road Design Site Plan for private streets on 22.19 acres. Zoned CH located at the southeast corner of Barfield Road and New Salem Highway. New Salem Land Development, Inc. is the developer. Do we have anyone on the Planning Commission or staff that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could we pull Item F, Valley Farms, off just for some discussion?
Absolutely. Any other items we'd like to take off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Take a motion on the consent agenda. With the exception of Item F.
I'll move to approve with the exception of Item F.
Say your...
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will go on to the Gateway Design Overlay, and I take it we'll come back to Valley Farms in other business?
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all don't let me forget. Okay. First and only item today under Gateway Design Overlay is Waterstone Lot 6 Volunteer Behavioral Health. The initial and final design review for 190-square-foot generator enclosure on 2.3 acres. Zoned MU and GDO3 located along Williams Drive. Volunteer Behavior Healthcare System developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Our only item under the Gateway portion of the agenda this afternoon is for you to consider an enclosure for a proposed generator on a site that's currently under construction. You may recall that last year, 2019, the Planning Commission approved a site plan for Waterstone Lot 6. It's called Volunteer Behavioral Health. And this plan was for a first-floor hospital, second-floor medical offices. That site is currently under construction. The building is just over 12,000 square feet. The plans, of course, were approved and did show a dumpster enclosure in the general vicinity what we're looking at today. During construction, they realized they needed a generator in sight. They have an existing generator on their current location that they would like to relocate to the site. So they reached out to staff and to administrative staff to discuss moving forward with that request. What we're asking you to do, due to how small this is, it's about 190-square-foot structure, that is exactly the same as the dumpster enclosure that was approved, for you to consider this item, initial and final design approval today, and provide whatever feedback, if I can follow up, if there's additional feedback regarding this enclosure. I did want to mention that I did go to DRC for review and consideration, and they were comfortable with the plans that are before you today. There were some comments asking for the trenching to be identified. They wanted to make sure it didn't go through the landscape island and disrupt the required shade tree. And the trenching plan was submitted. And then the DRC also asked for verification that the generator is shorter than the walls of the enclosure. And Mr. Taylor is here representing the applicant, and he confirmed that because the generator is existing, that they double-checked the height, that the wall will be two feet taller than that. This is in the general vicinity of the formal open space, but it does not take away from the formal open space that's required. Staff recommends approval of this plan because it does appear to meet our standards, and we would ask for you to consider initial and final design approval in one. Mr. Taylor's here for questions, but I don't think he was going to give you a presentation unless you had some specific questions about the project.
Anyone have any specific questions for Ms. Green or Mr. Taylor?
If all are none, I'll make a motion to approve initial and final.
Second.
And subject to all staff comments.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have Platts and Plans. Again, we have one item there today. That is the Haynes family, lots 3 through 5. Master Plan Amendment and Preliminary Platt for three lots on 4.5 acres. Zoned CH located along Memorial Boulevard. Track West Partners is the developer. Mr. Cooper, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commission members. The proposed master plan amendment amends a previous version of the Haynes family master plan from 2017 and proposes to add another lot onto the subdivision that was previously only proposed as four lots. This subdivision is located on Memorial Boulevard next to the Aldies and in front of the Underconstruction Park at Murfreesboro apartment complexes, apartment complex which I've received some final inspection requests for, so it's pretty far along in the process. The proposed master plan and preliminary plat will feature a full access point onto Memorial Boulevard that mirrors the access point from the subdivision across the street, which is Brookhaven Place. There will be access to the lots served by a private drive to the rear of the property, and Lot 5 will also have access to the private road to the south. Try to get there on the screen. We ask that Planning Commission approve the proposed master plan and preliminary plat with the condition that the applicant addresses all remaining staff comments. I will be available for any questions that you may have. And just a quick fun fact, I guess, the intersection of Eleanor Way and Memorial Boulevard, there's a proposed signalized intersection there, and that will be done on the first week of September. It's supposed to be fully operational. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Cooper regarding this item?
If there are none, I'll move for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Cooper. Next, we will move on to our new business. First item is a zoning application for approximately 0.4 acres located at 206 Dillon Lane to be rezoned from RS15 to RS8. The Journey Home, Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you. This first item is for you to consider scheduling a public hearing for an application to rezone property that's just under half an acre from its current RS15 zone. RS15 is a single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet to RS8. And RS8 is also a single-family residential district, it just has a different minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. The property currently is owned by The Journey Home, and it was acquired from the city of Murfreesboro several years ago. They have a desire to create two separate lots of record on this property. With our minimum lot width and square feet requirements, they cannot subdivide this property into two parcels. So they reviewed our zoning ordinance and determined that the RS8 district provided them with the minimum standards which would allow them to subdivide this property. So the request before you is to rezone the property to single-family residential district, RS8, with a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. They will remove the existing structures on the property to create those two separate lots of record. And the applicants do plan to build two residential buildings on these future lots as a part of their services to the local community. These homes will allow them to continue their personal mission. The property is identified on our future land use map as a future multifamily residential. So this is single-family residential, which is exactly consistent with that future land use map, but I know it is consistent with our vision to reduce the amount of properties zoned multifamily. So staff thinks that this would be a good change from, a good deviation from the future land use map. Mr. Matt Taylor represents The Journey Home, and he is making the application on their behalf today. If you have questions, he'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, we would ask that you schedule a public hearing for September 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions for Ms. Green or Mr. Taylor? And if not, we need to schedule a public hearing for September 2nd.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for September 2nd.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately one acre located along Clay's Mill Drive and Sulfur Springs Road. Allison Magna and Elizabeth Hellender, applicants. Ms. Green.
Thank you again. This next item is also a request for you to schedule a public hearing for an item which we've received. And we've received petitions for annexation for two properties that are not located within the Murfreesboro city limits. They are in our urban growth boundary. They are contiguous with current city limits, which you can see on the map. The gray area represents city limits. The areas shaded white are in the unincorporated area. And the two purple parcels are developed single-family homes. The red parcel, the blue parcel, is right-of-way, which the city is also studying for annexation. We did take this request to annex this right-of-way to the Rutherford County Road Board, and that was approved. So they have approved our request to annex this 150-foot linear, linear foot portion of right-of-way. These two parcels are a part of a subdivision that is currently located in the city limits, and it was left out of the annexation due to our interpretation of state law and policies and procedures for annexation that we not create islands of unincorporated area. And so by leaving these two parcels out and the right-of-way out, there was an opening in the donut hole, and it did not create a complete enclosure. Since we have a different interpretation of current laws and attorney's opinions, we feel comfortable that we can annex these parcels now. This came to our attention because the homes were constructed by Crescent Homes and were advertised as triple-seagull, which is something that when people buy homes, some people look for, not thinking that these two lots weren't in the city because all the remaining lots were in the city, which we think was an honest mistake, not knowing the background like we do here in the planning department. And the lots were purchased, and then the property owner was very concerned because they wanted to put their child in a city elementary school, and that is not possible if you're not a city resident without some special exceptions. And they did approach the Rutherford, or the city of Murfreesboro School Board. They approved them for one year to attend city schools with the caveat that they come before you and the city council and will request annexation. I am currently working on the annexation study and the feasibility plan for this property. So far, there haven't been any red flags, so I think that a public hearing on September 2nd will give me plenty enough time to finish up that plan and present it to you and have it available for consideration. We do have, I think we do have representatives of the application in the audience today if you have specific questions for them. But other than that, we would ask that you schedule a public hearing for September 2nd.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Green or either of the applicants?
Margaret Ann, I do have one question. I assume the two properties north of this property on the other side of the street were not a part of the original development, which is why they're not included in this request?
One of them, the one to the north, is certainly a part of the subdivision, because when I looked at the subdivision plat, I saw that. I can't speak to the one just north of that. They both are, okay. When I looked at the plat, I saw that they were a part of the same plat. We can't, we asked them, initially, there was an application just to annex one property, but we asked for them to do both sides of the road because it would create a less confusing situation and service delivery providers, especially when you have emergency services, where you need people to get out really quickly. Planning Department, I know other departments prefer that an entire street, if it's possible, to be in the city, so there's no, was that the Rutherford County fire, or is that the city of Murfreesboro fire? So we asked for them to go and see if they could annex the second parcel, and so that's why there's two parcels here. We would prefer additional parcels be included, but because of our current state laws, don't think that we have the authority to annex of our own volition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for September 2nd.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So then we have the annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 2.12 acres located along Veterans Parkway north of Franklin Road. Overall Creek Partners and Semphone, wrong, I'm going to go with that, applicants. Ms. Rush.
Madam Chair, if I may...
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Yes.
So I need to recuse myself from this vote, as the applicant is a customer of mine.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Salas.
The respective property owners, Overall Creek Partners and Semphone Ringtip, have each submitted a petition requesting that their property be annexed into the city of Murfreesboro. These are contiguous parcels. They are located on the west side of Veterans Parkway and north of Franklin Road. Simultaneous with the application is a request to zone the property to Commercial Highway, and both parcels currently contain a single-family residence that is occupied. They're both occupied residences. Each is a one-acre parcel, and this site might look familiar to some of the commissioners from a year ago almost to the date. The applicant had come forward, Overall Creek Partners, for the parcel that's on the south side of the pink area that's highlighted, and requested a public hearing be forwarded on to the city council. And the Planning Commission, following that public hearing and taking testimony, had given some direction to the applicant to go back and acquire additional land to make it a more buildable lot. Due to the small width of the property and the narrowness and those one-acre size, which is also was somewhat small, the applicant responded and has been working on this in the last year, has gone forward and put this second parcel under contract. So he's not the current owner, but he is under contract to purchase that property. So the study area is in the urban growth boundary and is contiguous to the city limits along Veterans as well as to the property to the south. And staff is asking for you all today to schedule this for a public hearing, and staff is recommending September 2nd as the hearing date. Mr. Patel is here if you have any specific questions about the project, as well as his representative, Mr. Huddleston. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rush. Any questions, comments regarding this application?
If no, I'll move to set a public hearing for September 2nd.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Then we have the zoning application for approximately 2.12 acres located along Veterans Parkway north of Franklin Road to be zoned Commercial Highway simultaneous with annexation. Overall Creek Partners is the applicant. Ms. Rush.
Yes, thank you. As indicated in the previous item, that these are the two parcels that are being requested for zoning consideration for Commercial Highway. As indicated, this was something that was reviewed in 2019 to be too much of a narrow parcel for a commercial type of development, and the owner has gone forward to try to acquire this. He has indicated his intention to remove the houses and combine the lots prior to development. Staff is recommending, or will be recommending, that those actions take place prior to a second reading, so that way it is not annexed and rezoned and remain as individual lots with these houses on it. So that would give the owner some time to accomplish those tasks with some certainty as direction that would come from the council. So the property is currently zoned Commercial Services for the parcel to the south and medium residential density to the parcel to the north. Both of these are in the county. So we are recommending that they be zoned to a CH when they do get annexed. The future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan shows both of these parcels as general commercial, so the rezoning would be consistent with the future land use map. The staff is recommending that this be placed on a public hearing for the Planning Commission for September 2nd, and the applicant and his representative are here if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rush. Any questions regarding the zoning application?
No questions, I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for September the 2nd.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any objections? And one abstention.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a zoning application to amend the PRD zoning on approximately 46.5 acres located along Last Cassus Pike and Dejarnet Lane. Goodall Homes LLC is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you. Our next application is for you to consider an amendment to an existing PRD along Last Cassus Pike north of Old Pitts Lane and east of Cushing Avenue. This property is located adjacent to the John Pittard Elementary School, Oakland Middle School, and Oakland High School. And to the north is the Pebble Creek subdivision, which is a PRD development with 8,000 square-foot lots and some existing county single-family subdivision. This property, you may recall, was annexed and zoned for PRD in 2017, and it was approved by the city council to consist of basically two types of dwellings. The existing, and this development's called Laurelstone, so we're calling this the Laurelstone PRD amendment. The existing PRD allows 199 total dwelling units with two different housing types, cottages and villas. And the request today is to add a third type of dwelling and overall reducing the number of units. So before, both types of housing were attached of some sort, and they're proposing now to add a single-family detached portion mostly along, let me get to the master plan here, mostly along Last Cassus Pike. You can see on the screen, this is the current, it's labeled "previously approved," but it's the currently allowed plan for this property according to the PRD. And those units that face Last Cassus Pike are attached townhomes, single-family attached. The larger products you can see are along the north. This property is significantly encumbered by floodplain, floodway, and one thing that you may recall from your review in this plan 2017 is there is a bridge that will be constructed to connect the east-west portions of the road, and that's still a part of this plan. I'll skip to the next page so you can see the proposed plan. So in that orange or yellowish-orange color along Last Cassus Pike and Old Pitts Lane are the single-family detached lots that they're proposing. They are still small lots, but they are, there are fewer of them, and of course, the separation is wider. I have just a few bullet points just to say what the changes are, and then I'm going to invite Mr. Taylor to the lectern to provide some additional information. So they'd like to introduce the new lot style by adding 31 single-family detached lots. They'll reduce the number of the villa units by four. They'll reduce the number of cottages by 40, and those are primarily the ones facing Last Cassus Pike. They are changing the amount of off-street parking. We're still currently working with them on their plan to make sure that they're providing equivalent to what was approved before. The plan that you have in your program book shows a connection to Old Pitts Lane now, but we've worked with them in our transportation department, and they're going to move back to how the plan was approved before, which has a cul-de-sac and no access to the Old Pitts Lane. So the version that you'll see at the Planning Commission public hearing will look like what was previously approved. They are changing the road network a bit. You can see there's a large open space, oh, let's see, how to describe it, on the north, on the northwest side of Bushman Creek. They did have units that went back in that area, but they've pushed them all toward the street and also lost some units there. And then they are modifying their open space plan. The single-family lots are proposed to be a minimum, or the homes are proposed to be a minimum 1,500 square feet, which is larger than the other two options here. The other two have a minimum of 1,200 or 1,400 square feet, and they are 41 feet wide. I'll go ahead and invite Mr. Taylor to the lectern to provide some additional information regarding this plan. They've been able to provide me a letter that I'll give to you for a public hearing outlining every change in this book. I think due to just some graphical changes, it's hard to compare the, what has changed because some areas were identified as open space, but were actually like detention or stormwater management areas. And so I wanted to be sure to manage expectations and not have it look like they're losing amenities, and they're still working on the graphics of that, and so I did want you to know that. But, Mr. Taylor?
Right behind you.
Matt Taylor from SCC. I think Margaret Ann did a good job explaining, I mean, the main change is a loss, a decrease in density by adding in a new, the single-family detached. And so, as Ms. Green said, I think we're maintaining the same amount of amenities. We are moving those around the site a little bit, you know, creating more green space, specifically more green space on the west side of Bushman Creek. So overall, I think the product, the quality stand the same, just less of it. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Taylor, what, I'm curious, obviously, it's unusual to move backwards. What's the nexus for that? What's the basis for that?
I think our client has identified just a, maybe a change in market. They still see a need for these, but they also see a need for the detached as well, which is something this community did not have. And so I think they hope, once they get their infrastructure in place, that that will accelerate their sales, you know, just by having that third option.
They're moving a lot of dirt.
Yeah. That they are. Dirt and rock.
Oh, yeah.
So, they've had a hard time getting that one kicked off for some reason, but I think they're out there and making good progress now with their utilities and storm. And we are still committed to installing the turn lanes along Last Cassus Pike as we were with the original, and also installing the bridge across Bushman Creek with this project, which we think will be vital to taking some pressure off of the Dejarnet Lane intersection in the mornings.
Mr. Taylor, just one, another curiosity question, and maybe Ms. Green may need to answer it as well, but the change from the cul-de-sac, then back, or then to the, through street, then back to cul-de-sac?
So I think that was a product of working at midnight, and, so...
Didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay. So we just, we didn't catch it before we'd submitted it. It should have been a cul-de-sac the whole time.
Okay, I think it looks like a nice improvement to the plan development, so I will look forward to seeing and hearing from the public on that. Has anybody got any other questions or anything, Mr. Taylor or Ms. Green?
If not, I'll make a... If not, I'll make a motion, we set the public hearing for September 2nd.
A second?
A motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is a mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment to consider the abandonment of a portion of Esther Lane Right-of-Way Mid-South Property Acquisitions LLC and the City of Murfreesboro Planning Department. Applicant, Ms. Rush?
Hello again. So yeah, this is a request for a mandatory referral to abandon a portion of Esther Lane. It's the right-of-way located on both the north and the south sides of Esther Lane for a width of 10 feet in both directions, and goes for approximately 691 linear feet. The purpose of the request is to reduce the current 80-foot width of this segment of Esther Lane to a 60-foot width, which matches the properties all to the west. This, we believe, may have been resulted from an error that took place in a prior mapping, because the intention was never for it to be an 80-foot width of right-of-way at the time. This came about in relation to the parcel on the corner of Red Litch Way and Esther Lane, where they were looking to expand the building, and because of that additional right-of-way being on their property, even though it's not improved, it's all grass, there just wasn't enough room, and it was encroached into the setback. So through the research, it was discovered that there was an error, and that that error continued on for the full 691 linear feet. So staff is recommending that this be scheduled for a public hearing. A public hearing is required on a mandatory referral that involves right-of-way, and September 2nd would work great.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion for a public hearing set for September 2nd.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rush. And moving on to our staff reports and other business, I understand we do have one item there that Ms. Green is gonna report for us on Clary Park.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. We are coming back to you with the zoning request for property along Medical Center Parkway and Wilkinson Pike, because we've continued to work with the applicants on their request. You may recall when Clary Park was initially presented to you, staff and our legal department had concerns that it just didn't meet the standard for plan developments. They weren't being detailed enough, specific enough to really what we needed, and we've struggled with them, and they've struggled with this for these months. And we proposed to them that they consider, in the commercial out parcels, the ones that are strictly commercial, changing the zoning request from Planned Unit District, PUD, to CH Commercial Highway District, remaining in the Gateway Design Overlay District 1 and 2, but that would mean that the bulk standards would apply, the GDO standards would apply in design guidelines, but they wouldn't have to have their plan as specific as we need them to be. And we, so we gave them basically options, consider this as an option, or consider really committing to what's going there. And they came back to us, and their attorney came back to our legal staff and said that they wanted to move forward with the strictly commercial properties, still having this being a master plan development. The residential portion would have to be PUD because single-family detached, or single-family attached is not permitted in the mixed-use district, and the amount of apartment they want to do wouldn't be permitted either, so they still have to do a plan development for the project. They'll still be amending the approved master plan and creating a new master plan, but they're now modifying their request to identify some of these parcels as CH Commercial Highway District, so, because they can't get to a place on these parcels where they're very specific about the plan. And so this, this public hearing is scheduled for September 6th, September 2nd, sorry. And with this change, we wanted to bring it back before you and get any feedback that we may need to get, and I think amend, or get a new motion regarding scheduling the public hearing to consider some of this to be Commercial Highway District.
Okay. So we're still moving ahead with September 2nd?
Mm-hmm.
So we will see, when our agenda comes out, it will have all the new layouts and requests, and everything will be changed and ready?
The agenda will be published Friday, not, not this Friday, but next Friday, and you'll have the program book with the specifics in it. So these boundaries follow the plan that was in there anyway, I think Area 4, Area 3, and Area 1. So they've identified those areas that weren't mixed-use and weren't residential, and just followed that boundary there. So what will change is the request, the amount of land being requested to be PUD will change the amount, and then adding CH. There are still some off-site improvements we fully expect for them to do along Medical Center Parkway, some street extensions and connections that will be a part of the plan development. And this will be simultaneous with the zoning change, a master plan amendment as well, because we do have a master plan in this area, and they're wanting to change the plan for that and add additional properties to it. So it's important, and I've been working with Mr. Huddleston, and I think our legal staff's looked at it, although I haven't worked directly with them, about how we can ensure quality overall. I mean, I think the gateway gives you a certain, probably gives you a certain level of comfort with development, and that was something that we thought, okay, well, since we know it's still Gateway 1, GDO 1, GDO 2, you can be assured that what you see along Medical Center Parkway is in place. There were some uses that are allowed in CH that Margaret Ann didn't really like being close to the, where people live. They, you know, a little further away is fine, like car repair, discount tires on Medical Center Parkway, and it would be allowed in the CH zone, but as far as quality of life, you don't want to live next to that drill sound all day long. And, and they seem to concur that they didn't want that either, and so they're, I think, thinking about how to add additional regulations to the CH to ensure that same quality. I know across the street, the avenues has that. They have a strong owners' association. They have a strong ARC, Architectural Review Committee. And before the projects come to me, they already have staff, like architects, look at them and make sure they meet their standards. Now, sometimes when they get to me, I still need to ask for changes, but oftentimes I don't. And those out parcels that you see along the avenue, although we allow some of, some uses, like, you may remember Polio Tropical, some of you have been on the board for several years, was, we reviewed plans and approved plans in front of the avenue, but the Avenue's Owners Association, the restrictions, said that that type of restaurant didn't meet their, their standard. I know ownership's changed, but we, we really want them to look at how they can make sure this is, continues to be cohesive. This, this proposal was, was an effort to meet their, their uncertainty about the development in these areas. They know they want to do those apartments. They know they want to do the townhomes. The rest of it is sort of more in the air. They don't have anybody asking to, other than an extension of the rooms to go, there's nobody. They have lined up for these commercial highway parcels.
Was, and I just don't remember all the, like, details, but the fact that you're taking these parcels out of the, the big picture for things that were percentages, like maybe if the amenity space, or the, whatever, all those percentages now change because the amount of land, I mean, it all still, all of that gets recalculated and redone because now there's that much less land in this plan development.
Yeah. So it's still a master planned community, so they still have the master plan that can include all the parcels, and our mixed-use zoning does speak to master plans. One of the percentages you may be talking about is in a development of size, we have a footnote in our zoning ordinance for the mixed-use district that says no more than 25% of the land area can be consumed by the only type of residential use that we allow in mixed-use, and that's multifamily. So as a plan development, they can write their own cocktail anyway, so even though the percentages were changed, they can still move forward with it if the planning commission's okay with it and the city council's okay with it. But I think they'll still look at this as a master planned community, because when we look at those percentages, a lot of them are based on the master plan, and that's why I think it's important, too, that we treat the master plan at the same time as the zoning, because we want to make sure they're locked into that, and if they wanted to change it, they'd have to. With a master plan amendment, they only come back to planning commission, it's not a city council function. With a plan development amendment, they would go to city council.
Okay. And formal space requirements and all that.
Those are written in the zoning ordinance anyway, and they would apply to CH. And if they wanted to do something that's not, or if they wanted to do less than is in the zoning ordinance, they have to specifically say in the program book, this is the standard, and we don't want to meet it, and this is why we don't think we do. And you routinely see that with parking. You'll hear people pontificate about how our parking standards don't meet their expectations, and, and sometimes you approve plan developments with a lesser standard because they have less possible college students, or the type of development may, may warrant that. And so that has to be specifically called out in a plan development, otherwise they are subjected to all standards ordinances that, that apply. So everything in the, in our ordinance and our design guidelines applies to them unless they get a written exception, and they have six identified. And I don't think those will change. The percentages may look different, but it's still the same plan.
Okay. Okay. And so you're looking for a motion from us, just basically to amend our original motion to say that this is the plan we will see on September 2nd, some version of this versus what we originally approved or voted on at our last meeting?
Yeah. At your last meeting, you scheduled a public hearing to consider that entire property to be zoned PUD. We'd like for you to consider the property to be zoned CH and PUD, and remain in the GDO 1, GDO 2.
Mm-hmm. And all of that will still take place at a public hearing on September 2nd?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions before someone jumps in and makes that motion? We'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion, we set this for a public hearing on September 2nd.
Is there a second?
Second.
No motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. And Mr. Blomley. I'm guessing we have some other staff reports and other, other business.
Just the item that was removed from the consent agenda.
Oh, thank you. See? See? That was a long time ago. We will go back to item F on the consent agenda. Valley Farms Section 1, final plat for 36 slots on 10.87 acres, zoned PUD in Rutherford County, and served as an outside-the-city sewer customer located along Dunbar Lane. Valley Farms Group LLC is the developer. Thank you, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. Our, this item is a final plat for Section 1 of the Valley Farms subdivision, which was, which is land that has been approved as an outside-the-city sewer customer. The preliminary plat was approved, I think, in 2017 by the planning commission, and they're moving forward with construction. And of course, this final plat brings the, the infrastructure construction to a close as they record the final plat and you're ready to, to permit lots. Pull up the PDF of the plan. As you can see, it is for 36 lots, including a couple of common areas. It is directly adjacent to the Buchanan Estates subdivision located off of Eps Mill Road, to the north of Eps Mill Road. And so they are requesting for approval of this final plat so they can move forward, get the final plat recorded, and begin permitting the individual, the houses on the individual lots with outside-the-city sewer customers. The, the plans go through our normal planning commission process. So the, the preliminary plat, which was, as I mentioned, was brought to you several years ago and approved, and then the construction plans are, just like the preliminary plat, are reviewed by both the city and the county. I believe Ms. Knoll or, or one of her colleagues in, in our engineering department reviewed the construction plans, and the final plat must get approval by the city and the county as well. The individual building permits are, are issued only by the, the county. There are not building, individual building permits for the homes issued by the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Chris McGuire from Huddleston Steel, the engineer on the project, is here if you have any questions for him. And if you have any questions relative to, to sewer, sewer-ing of this property, Ms. Valerie Smith with the Water Resources Department is here as well.
Thanks, Matthew. I just wanted to. I asked for this to be removed, just because I thought it was good for us to have this conversation related to outside service, you know, outside city sewer service. You know, I know there's currently some, some legal action that's challenging that for the council decision to make that mandate to say, we're not going to accept, you know, outside city sewer customers any longer. But I did think it was important, and I called Valerie, and we had a conversation about this, just to talk about what makes this different than some other things, because I think that's really important to the degree we can be consistent. I think we try to be consistent to talk about what makes Valley Farms different. So if you could speak to that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think I will defer that to Ms. Smith if she's, she's available.
Hello, members of planning commission. We, as staff, had discussions about projects that were outside the city sewer in this area, in the Buchanan Assessment District, and particularly at this interchange. And one thing that made this project different and be in that list of projects that were grandfathered is, well, not just one thing, they had approved as outside city sewer customer. They had purchased off-site sewer easement that, I don't know if I can point that out on here, but at the left of the plan, you can see the route of the sewer easement that connects into Buchanan Estates there. So the developer had purchased easement off-site in order to develop the subdivision. We, they were approved as outside city sewer customer and had that contract to where they agreed to build to city standards. We received, in our office, plans to review for the sewer extension back in January of 2018. So the project has been in the works prior to the onset of deciding not to serve outside city sewer customers any longer and the lawsuit with the fairs.
So that's, that was the main point I wanted to bring up, is just, you know, this is different, and this is something that had been in the works, and as we talked about, you know, trying to make a call about who was in and who was not in on that, the timelines associated with that was very important, and the acquisition of the easement. So there was not a, in this instance, rush to capture that outside sewer capacity. This was something that had been work, been working the whole time. So thank you for that. I just wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, for being here, helping explain that. I did also question that before the meeting, so glad you brought it up, and that way we can make sure everybody understands and, and just go through without explanation. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from planning commission members? Comments? So then we'll need a motion to approve this one item.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Any other staff reports or other business that I forgot?
I have nothing.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, then. We stand adjourned.